The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
All right, I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Just to help everyone who's here know the order of our agenda. First, we will start with a public hearing. During that time, one of the things we will do is hear public comments from those of you that have come to speak before the board. If you are interested in speaking, if you could fill out, I know many of you already have, but there's a form out on the table, whatever color that is. That yellow form.
Kind of a golden rod.
Golden, whatever. Or if you decide as you're hearing other people speak that you would like to speak and you haven't filled out a form, you can do that after you speak also. We are going to ask everyone who speaks to stay to three minutes. I'm going to ask Kristin to come up to the table and she will hold up minutes left for you so that you can kind of gauge your speaking time. After the public hearing, we will actually adjourn that meeting and immediately start our special board meeting where we will consider board action on the budget. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Langenfeld who has some introductory remarks.
Thank you so much. Good evening. As we think about the Green Bay area public school students these days, they have more learning opportunities and additional supports thanks to the Boards of Education's decision to invest in expanding learning opportunities and adding some very innovative programs as we move forward. I think these strategic investments, some of them one-time investments, are aligned with the district's strategic directions and are really intended to increase student achievement while working to decrease the achievement gap. The strategic investments afford our students the choice of multiple pathways to personal success, thus ensuring the district's mission, of course, of college, career, and community ready for each and every student in the Green Bay area public schools. And I'd like to share just some examples of the Board's investments as we move forward. We now have the K-12 International Baccalaureate Program that spans from Chapel Elementary, Franklin Middle School, and West High School. We have project-based learning at the John Dewey Academy for Learning, and I think what's important to recognize is that that enrollment continues to expand. Expansion of our Spanish immersion to include Baird, Danz, Jackson, Wilder Elementary Schools. Phase 2 of East High School Institute for the Fine Arts to include the visual arts as well. And then we have violin and piano beginning in grade 2 and Integrated Arts at Webster Elementary School. We're very pleased with the K-12 Academy for Gifted and Talented, and you'll hear more about that. A technology-education partnership between Southwest High School and Northeast Wisconsin Technical College. And of course, our 4K has grown and is now located at multiple sites. I think one of the most exciting of them being a nature-based 4K at the Wildlife Sanctuary. We have ongoing partnerships between Northeast Wisconsin Technical College, Green Bay Area Public Schools, Habitat for Humanity, and Neighbor Works. And tomorrow morning, we're actually going to be touring the sites where the students from our high schools are working in partnership, both building as well as renovating in our community to learn about construction and architecture. You'll hear later how we are expanding our after-school programs to meet the needs of even more children in the area, not only in the Green Bay area public schools, but it's certainly open to all in our community. And I think one of the pieces as we think forward is to recognize that these strategic investments were made possible, some with Microsoft dollars, energy projects, grants, and of course, a number of spending efficiencies. We always look to make sure that we are wise and good stewards of taxpayer dollars, also aligning with our strategic mission to ensure that every dime is focused on meeting our mission of achieving college, career, and community ready for each and every child. I would like to, if the Board would afford me this opportunity, to share with you just a brief video of what our families are saying about Green Bay area public schools.
My teachers, to me, they're so helpful. Like, they actually, it seems like, you know, they really want me to pass my class, and they really want me to get the grade I want.
And there's teachers too that, like, I'm just like, oh my gosh, where have you been all my life?
Teachers are cool and do stuff fine. You're just like, okay, school, you wake up, and you're ready to go, and you're like, come on, Mom, I don't want to be late. Because you have to get to school, and then you have a fun time at school. Teachers will go one by one and help you using your learning skill and help you with you.
The teachers help you out when you need help with homework.
Love the teachers. My kids are able to excel in everything that they do. The teachers are there to support them, and that's what I love. They go above and beyond.
My teachers are caring and always trying to make me do my best.
No, it's not a school. It's like a family type, because you get to know the teacher, then they all are so friendly, and they listen.
Everybody was welcoming to me, and everyone was talking to me, and it was such an easy transition. I'm so happy I did it.
They're both really, really smart kids, and they need to be challenged, and, you know, the schools have given them that opportunity.
I like that. There's lots of choices in the class, because I love learning.
No, they're part of the state's an all-boys school.
Every day, I'm excited to learn.
I like my school because of all the programs that they have.
That's very comforting for a parent to know that he's being appreciated for what he is. And meanwhile, he's learning, he's being challenged, and at that, like, he didn't have to hide his intelligence. Something he has to, he can be proud of.
Knowing that my top is safe at school.
I like the Green Bay's public schools because they're so diverse. They get to learn, and there's so many other kids in their classes, and from different backgrounds, so they get to learn their values.
I both my children are now very happy to be there, and they shine being in Green Bay. There's, you know, a lot of different culture that comes together in the schools, and it's good for our kids to be able to be exposed to the differences and learning to accept the differences.
We love the schools. This is, I wanted to move, I will not move.
Come for a day and chat, have your child chat with someone, because I've seen that done. And, you know, ask for some things of parents to talk to.
There's tons of diversity, kids from everywhere.
It's just cool that our kids' schools reflect the actual world of it.
I'm always excited to learn more things and just get a bigger brain.
It's just been an overall really amazing experience, and there's never been a time where I felt like I couldn't go to someone, or like, even if I had a bad day, there would always be someone that could help me.
I think that people around here really appreciate how good it is up here.
We've had great, amazing teachers every year for our children that really love them and really go above and beyond.
I think that if anybody could just give a day to any public school, especially mine. I can't say enough about it, I love it.
I'm really, really going to miss my teachers and the staff.
I think Green Bay schools is a good experience for me.
They treat us like family.
So our experience in the Green Bay public school has been fantastic.
My favorite day at school is every day.
I love the magic.
She's accessorized well.
Yeah, she is accessorized well, ready for school.
Includes my remarks.
All right, thank you, Dr. Langenfeld. Next, I'd call, oh, he's already here. Alan's going to give us the recommended changes for the budget.
We have an adopted budget on October 7th, and when we had that budget approved by the Board, there were still some items that we still did not know what the actual amounts were going to be, including the student count, the equalized aid amount, and our equalized property value. As you well know, the $40 million increase to the equalized values across the state, we had, because of that addition, we had an increase of $688,446 in state equalized aid from the amount that was approved on October 7th. And again, all of that has to do with the, again, the reallocation of adding $40 million to the equalized aid formula and then recalculating it all over again. And at one time, that was going to be done by October 31st, which is why we thought we may have to move the meeting, but the DPI did that rather quickly, and because I'm sure a lot of districts already had their meetings planned last week of October, so.
Alan, can I just interrupt you? I want the public to, and would you reinforce that the additional money that the state was putting into public education, that money has to flow directly into property tax relief, and that none of that goes to schools for their operating budget?
That is correct. I mean, the revenue limit calculation determines how much revenue a district has. Because that did not, those dollars weren't used to increase the amount per student revenue-wise. It was just given to the school districts, and all it was, and it changed our equalized aid amount. It did not give us any additional dollars to spend on our children within our district. And again, there were, with 424 districts, there were, again, winners and losers, because a lot of it, again, on equalized aid depends on what your property value is per student. And districts who are rich districts as far as property values did not receive nearly as much as a district like Green Bay. If you look three lines down, you look at the property tax levy revenue, and I'll just go to that line because you can see with the $688,000 increase in equalized aid, it also there made a reduction in the property levy of $622,701. One of the other things that we looked at as far as the change, we looked at the final student count. And based on the revenue limit calculation, we reduced the number of students that we had in our final count, and that would account for the total general fund revenues going down, $168,000. If we look at the computer aid revenue, which is something a little bit difficult to explain, but at one time, at one time, the business computers were taxed with the property tax. And a number of years ago, that they stopped taxing it through the property tax. And in order for districts to still get those dollars and not have to increase their levies, the state came up with a computer aid revenue, a state categorical aid that calculates the amount of revenue based on the property value of computers within your district. And you can see there's quite a big change, $234,000. And the problem with that is that amount of market value for those computers goes up and down each year. And it really just evens out what, it evens out what goes through to the tax levy. And so again, there's a $622,000 decrease in the general fund tax levy, and again, mainly due to the increase in the equalized aid. Again, the general fund expenditure change, as our revenues, total revenues went down, $168,528, we made a reduction in our expenditures to match that, so our revenues and expenditures in this year's budget now match at $252.5 million. Looking at the property tax levy changes, we've talked about the general fund. The general fund reduced by $622,000. And again, our debt service fund and our community service fund were the same amounts as they were previously. When we approved the budget on October 7th, our budget, our levy was $80,572.525, which was the same amount as it was the previous year. But because of that last change in the equalized aid, the levy actually there decreased by $622,701. If you look at our equalized tax rate, it doesn't show on there, but our equalized tax rate last year was $10.39. And now we're at $10.11. And that's 28 cents a thousand that our equalized tax rate is going down. So on a home of $150,000 home, we should see roughly a $28 decrease in the property taxes. And again, when the governor came out with the $40 million, he was looking at a $13 decrease the first year, and then the second year, he will add another $60 million for a total of $100 million, and then he expected there would be a 20 cent increase. But because of, you know, that is just a state average, because again, our district received a higher percentage increase in our equalized aid, and that's why we see the tax rate going down. And again, the possibility that there would be a, I don't know if I said a 28, a $42 savings. It would be 28 cents per thousand in a $150,000 home. It would be a $42 savings for a $150,000 home. So again, seeing a pretty good tax decrease, larger than what the state average is going to be, and again, due to our getting a higher percentage of that $40 million versus other districts. And those are the changes. They're the usual changes that we have every year, again, based on what the final numbers are. And that, unless there are any questions on that, those are the changes.
Are there any questions? No, all right, thank you, Alan. Next, we'll move to our public comments, and I want to thank all of you, those of you who've come to speak before the Board. I'm going to read the names of people in order that they handed forms to Sandy. So when you come to the table, please state your name, your address, and then Kristin will give you a three-minute time indication. First, I'd like to call up Lyle Wilkett.
My name is Lyle Wilkett. I live at 1942 Isaiah Avenue, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I don't attend too many school board meetings, and there's nothing that, I shouldn't say nothing, there's things that aren't as interesting in that I have in this budget that I do have. And one of them is the two billings that we purchased, one for the gifted and talented students and one for the ones with behavioral problems, which I could see. With the gifted student, I can't see why they cannot stay in a regular classroom. You read in a paper where there's gifted students, they have an article where a student, a four-point grade average, is involved in this, involved in that, and whatever, and being in a regular classroom doesn't seem to affect them. And I believe that some of these students that are gifted and talented are probably a little more ambitious, and being in a regular classroom isn't going to hurt them at all. And I kind of think that, to me, it seems like we're kind of favoring them over the general population. And I don't know if that's right or not to me. I would think they should stay in a general school population. There were just a couple of comments I wanted to make to you, too. This concerns some of the teachers. I've heard comments in the public at that about duties that are being posed on our teachers that takes time away from their planning, preparation, and their teaching. Now, I don't know what these were, that was just over connotation, I heard people talking. So evidently, there must be, I don't know, are they, this being done? Can they spend all the actual time that's necessary to prepare their lessons and teach their class? And then one other quick comment. I'm sure we have some students out of district, and if we do, are they paying the full cost of the education per student? And there's one other quick thing I missed here in my notes here. What is the cost, difference in the cost per gifted and talented student compared to a student in a regular classroom? I'm sure that the gifted, talented students is costing them more than a student in a regular population, and I don't think that's fair. Everybody should be treated the same thing, and I believe that they should stay in a classroom with the regular students. And they're just being, to me, they're just being favored, you know? And these students can get along by themselves. You know, like I said, you read in a paper where these students with a four-point grade average are doing this, they're doing that. They're in a regular classroom, and it doesn't seem to be hurting them. These students are probably more ambitious than a regular student, so that is, that's a bottom than being in a regular classroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, again, I forgot to mention, with public hearings, we don't engage in conversation about what you're bringing to the table, but you've asked a lot of really good questions, and so we will make sure somebody gets back to you to have conversation with you and answer the questions that you've asked.
Yeah, I was just warning you, I don't cover many budgets. Are there any changes ever from the comments made by the public at these public hearings? Aren't these budgets usually all cut and dried? I don't know.
Yeah, we'll have somebody get back to him.
Yeah, I want to make sure, do you have any comments in writing to make sure we have them? Sandy, do you think you have all the questions? Okay, as long as you have the questions and whatnot.
And we do take into account what the public says. This just is our last public hearing.
No, you're fine.
You're fine, Mr. Wilkett.
You're fine. All right, thank you.
Take care.
Next, I'll call up, sorry, Jackson Prosky.
Good evening. I'm here to thank you for bringing football back to the middle schools. And there's different reasons I'm here, but one, we had 64 kids come out for 7th and 8th grade at Washington Junior, and it's amazing. The first year, it's back. And there are so many people that come to the games, and family, and it's just like the neighborhood's back, kind of. And I can't thank you enough. It's just, I mean, it's a real-world thing. You talk about diversity, we got it, and it's great. I mean, you name it. And it just brings camaraderie and the whole gamut, and I can't say enough. And I'm just here to say thanks on behalf of the kids. Go Heat, go!
I just want to see the logo.
Yeah.
My children are Rockets at Washington, so this is a change.
Well, so that's the name of the team.
That's Washington Heat, and that's the logo.
And that coincides with the East Red Devils.
Red Devils, right.
You can see the tail.
You can see the tail.
Yep.
From the Red Devil tail.
Oh, I see.
See it?
Yep.
It's pretty cool.
The logical transition, that is a nice logo.
It is.
That is, very.
I heard the kids did it.
And we still like our chess tournaments, too.
Yes, I'm sorry, I missed it on Saturday.
That was on, it was great.
It was there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Michelle Alstine.
Hi, my name is Michelle Alstine. I live at 831 Forest Hill Drive, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I'm here to talk about John Dewey, J-Daw we call it, John Dewey Academy of Learning, so J-Daw for short. My son is a freshman there this year. Last year was his 8th grade year. He had been homeschooled all of his life until John Dewey came into being. So I'm here to talk about what a wonderful school it is and how grateful we are to put my squirrely 9th grade boy into a school. This is a school that lets a student be a square peg in a round hole, kind of, he learns differently. So he would not excel in a school that he had to learn from textbooks, and that's why we homeschooled him. We didn't think that he would be a successful student sitting at a desk for eight, nine hours a day with textbooks. So at home, he could dribble a basketball, or sit on a yoga ball, or stand on his head and read, which he did. And at John Dewey, the advisors and the staff are accepting of the different ways of learning and how each student learns, and they take into consideration each student's differences. It doesn't make John Dewey an alternative school, which people have asked me, is it a school for special kids? It's a school for kids, period. It's not an alternative school. It's a school that caters to every student's individual thinking. Everybody in this room thinks differently, so why can't schools be done differently? And each student can go with these different kinds of choices of school. My son likes it. He still struggles a little bit with, he says he wants a textbook, and then he tries a textbook, and then he doesn't like it. But the staff is very accommodating, and they have different programs where they do math online that fits the bill for sitting still at a desk. And he's just really learning how to excel and work in a group. It's a very family-oriented community, and the staff is committed to each of those kids being successful in high school and after high school. So I'm just, it's a great school, and we need more of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Andrew and Katie Higgins?
Good evening, members of Board. Thanks for taking our comments today. My name is Andrew Higgins, this is my wife Katie. Our son is nine years old, and he attends the School for Academically Gifted Learners. This is actually his second year at the school, having previously attended a local private school for kindergarten and first grade. During our son's time in first grade at his prior school, we suspected that he had some unique learning needs that were not diagnosed nor being addressed. He had an insatiable appetite for learning, would read for hours at a time, would, you know, doing complex math problems for the fun of it. His passion for learning and understanding, his giddiness over solving a really complex math problem, we thought was fairly odd, but it was inspiring and kind of infectious, and such an innocent joy in his eyes. We realized at that time that he learned differently, is kind of the simple way to put it. Right or wrong at the time, we thought the best place for him was in a private school. Midway through that year, we saw some warning signs that that wasn't going to be the case. He often complained about school being boring, not being challenged. The one-size-fits-all approach of the pace particularly was too slow. Socially, he had some issues with connecting with kids his age. And as the school year progressed, we could see our son was slowly relenting, kind of withdrawing. And this was fairly painful to watch. As a parent, it's a sad moment to see your child lower their expectations about the world around them. And it left us quite uneasy. After all, childhood is a time for dreaming, okay, for thinking big, and really believing that you can accomplish anything, and anything is possible. In the spring of 2012, with the approval of this Board, the School for Academically Gifted Learners was announced. And in hindsight, this was a momentous day for our son's future and for so many other kids in the area.
We are thrilled with the growth and progress that our son has enjoyed at his new school, and with the growth and the success of the SAG-LAW program as a whole, just to shorten it up. Our son now goes to school excited to learn and returns with energy and enthusiasm over the challenges and new things he is discovering. His friendships and emotional connections to peers are also thriving. He is surrounded by other students who approach learning with a similar vigor and excitement, and he is no longer an outsider in the classroom. We are so appreciative that our son has the opportunity to participate in this school. We are so pleased with the rate at which the program has grown and how often we hear other school families echo similar sentiments to ours regarding their pleasure with the school and the relief that they feel that their child has made the switch. We want to express our sincere gratitude over the purchase of the former Cathedral School and the opportunities it will allow for our growing school. The district's focus on education customization and the related investments made within the school budget allows our child and many others to have the opportunity to be met where they are in a program that is uniquely designed to meet their needs. Investing in such a program is investing in the future and vitality of our community. Thank you.
Thanks for your support.
Me, too.
Thank you. Next is Tammy Schick.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Schick, and I'm actively involved in the Green Bay Public Schools. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about one of the things that is making a huge difference.
Tammy, sorry, could you list your address?
I'm sorry, 322 14th Avenue, Green Bay.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk about something that's making a difference in the lives of our students, and that is the computers that have been allowed to be in our classrooms. In this district, particularly at the middle school level, the ability of the students to be able to research and to be able to have at their hands basically the world has made a great deal of difference in our kids and in what they can do. The ability to compute in an adult way, communicate with one another, communicate with their teachers, and so forth, has been a very big plus. Another plus that is being seen in our schools, particularly at the middle school level, is the students being recognized for being good students and for being applauded for that in clubs and in the way the incentives and so forth are being given. And we want to thank you for that ability because that's what's making the Green Bay Public Schools a really positive place for our kids. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have, uh, Steve Hardy and Jill Lovarda. Do you each have separate comments that, I mean, I'm thinking we can give you...
We'll, we'll keep one hundred, hundred and three.
Both of you together? Okay. Can you go over a little?
She talks fast.
Otherwise, I mean, you should have.
Otherwise, well, we should get five together when we talk.
There's safety in numbers.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, my name is Steve Hardy, and this is Jill Lovarda, and we're here representing the, the Green Bay Y. The address is two thirty-five, uh, North Jefferson. And, um, first of all, we'd like to, to thank the, the Board of Education for, for your trust in community-based organizations like the Y, um, uh, to provide critically important after-school programs so that together we might expand our collective impact on the lives of the children that we serve. I believe we're all keenly aware of the importance of providing quality after-school programs for children of all ages in order for them to, to stay safe and out of trouble. There's clear and compelling evidence that after-school hours are the time when juvenile, juvenile crime hits its peak, and children are likely to engage in, in risky behaviors. Absent of parental and other adult supervision, quality after-school programs mitigate the likelihood that children will fall prey to unhealthy behaviors. Equally important is the social, emotional, and academic support provided to children who participate in quality after-school programs. In our programs, we see children that improve academic performance, self-confidence, and social skills. And I'd like Jill to talk, talk just a little bit or briefly about some of the, the, um, our programs specifically.
Thank you, Steve. The Y has four after-school sites currently funded by the Green Bay School District, serving students at Howe, Eisenhower, Sullivan, and Doty Elementary Schools. At these four sites, we serve an average of three hundred and forty students and also currently have waiting lists. Students participating in these programs typically have the greatest need for academic support and youth development. Daily, the students have a full meal, academic support such as homework help, individual or group tutoring, mentoring, health and wellness activities, and enrichment activities that are project-based learning linked to the school day. These programs would not be successful without the support of the Green Bay School District and the school day staff, who provide information and training about the academic curriculum and links to the school day, to provide a seamless transition for the students from school day to after-school. Due to the strong partnership and the collaborative nature of the district, the YMCA has been able to secure additional funding to support academic performance. For example, for the current school year, the Y will provide thirty thousand dollars at Eisenhower to lower the academic achievement gap as part of a grant from YUSA. This is part of a three-year grant and a sixty thousand dollar project for Eisenhower awarded because of the collaboration of the school and the district with the Y.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Rich Carlstedt?
It's nice to hear from happy parents, isn't it?
It's very nice to hear. We're going to continue those happy thoughts.
Right. I'm Rich Carlstedt, sixteen forty Dancing Dunes Drive, Green Bay. Good evening, and I welcome the opportunity to address the Green Bay Board of Education on this year's budget proposal. Obviously, my numbers do not reflect the recently announced revision of six hundred thousand dollars to the overall budget. As a member of the Brown County Taxpayers Association, we are seriously concerned with proposed expenditures in this year's budget. You seem to accept the proposal of a new budget for over a quarter of a billion dollars without a whimper or even a voice objections to some outlandish proposed increases. I must remind you that you represent the public, and your focus, uh, to guide our school district includes that of fiscal responsibility. Your actions to date reflect a reluctance to do so. A spend while you can or tax to the max is not the only message you convey, but an attitude that is harsh to seniors on a limited budget and those less fortunate taxpayers in difficult situations. You mentioned children who are hungry and then completely forget that their parents must pay taxes or rent in high-tax areas. Mind you, when you vote yes to this administration's proposal, it becomes yours. There is no du- reason to shift debt and then require taxpayers to pick up an extra five and a half million dollars. It makes a mockery of public consideration and your reputation. You taxed local taxpayers sixty-four point four million dollars last year in the general fund, and now seek seventy million and have the audacity to say it's not a tax increase. Semantics replaces reality. There is no reason to carry a fund balance over forty-one million dollars when the stated goal of the gu- bu- board, it seems, to be fifteen percent, which is thirty-four million dollars. This is seven million dollars in local overtaxation. We have to assume the retirement costs of two hundred and twenty teachers who left over a year ago, and the resultant savings in high salaries and costs have evaporated. Where are the lower salaried and fringe costs? Certainly not in the five point six percent increase in budget projections. In the five years I have come before you at budget time, never once has the board reduced, changed, or requested a revision in the proposed Green Bay school budget, not even for one dollar. Can you find it reasonable that administrative salaries are going up over fifteen percent in the budget? Is that a wake-up call, or are you oblivious to community concerns?
Are you about done, Rich? Is your time, your time is, just if you can wrap it up quickly, please.
All right. Lest the general public not hear the truth, it remains that the Green Bay School District is increasing its budget twenty point eight million dollars this year. That's a nine percent increase in spending. Call it what you may, ladies and gentlemen, it's a sham. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rich. Um, and lastly, uh, John Benberg.
Good evening. My name is John Benberg, and my work address is three eleven South Onida Street here in Green Bay. And I'm appearing tonight as the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Green Bay in support of the twenty thirteen fourteen budget, and specifically, the use of community service fund dollars to provide critical opportunities for kids outside the instructional day. We have six school sites that are partially or fully supported by Fund eighty that offer, among other things, a safe place, which our program participants might not otherwise have, a hearty meal, which our program participants might not otherwise have, and a variety of life-changing programs that they would otherwise not have access to with an emphasis on academic achievement. Said another way, without this local financial support, hundreds of area kids would likely be on their own at the highest risk time of the day, which I think we would all agree is a bad formula. So, thanks for your support in this regard thus far, and I urge you to approve the proposed twenty thirteen fourteen budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. That's all the forms I have. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, um, I'll entertain a movement to adjourn this portion of our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then I would like to reconvene our special board meeting and, um, begin, did you want to say anything else?
Oh, I think we're, I think Alan, yeah.
Okay, all right, then I'll just call, um, we'll start with, uh, Alan and the, um, first motion. I'll entertain the first motion, and then we'll have Alan speak. Did you want to say?
Yeah, I would, if, I don't see a board coming, I would like to say something.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I would like to address, uh, some of the misperceptions that may be held by some of those, uh, testifying, uh, before the board, uh, perhaps those in the audience, those watching us on TV, or perhaps those in the community. And I think that misperception is that the board pay, plays a passive role in the development of this budget. That staff presents a budget, we hold a couple of meetings, ask a few questions, and then vote to approve it. Almost every action the school board takes during the year impacts the size and scope of this budget. There's money for middle school football in the budget because of board action. There's money for, to purchase a building for the gifted and talented because of board action. There's money for expansion of the International Baccalaureate Program, the Fine Arts Program, and the Two-Way Bilingual Program because of board action. There's money in the budget for additional staff to assist teachers to better use technology in their classroom because of board action. There's money in the budget for school resource office, school resource officers because of the decision made many years ago by this school board. And I could go on and on. The most critical decision this board has made in the past several years is the hiring of Michelle Langenfeld, who directs and guides the staff that presented us with a budget that is student and parent-friendly, staff-friendly, community-friendly, and taxpayer-friendly, and I enthusiastically support it.
All right, thank you, Mike. Um, anybody else want to make any comments before we begin? Okay, I'll, uh, turn it over to Alan then, or actually, we, I entertain the motion, but I think we didn't take...
We have motion resolution first.
Yeah, I need to, I need to, um, entertain a motion for the resolution before we begin.
So moved.
Second? All right. Go ahead, Alan.
Um, the revenue limit exemption for energy is something that was in the state budget, the biennium budget, and again, it allowed districts to, uh, add to their revenue limit dollars that would be used for energy projects. And we've talked, brought this to the board, uh, we've discussed this as part of the budget. Uh, what we are looking for is, uh, to pass the resolution that we will, uh, again levy the four million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars, which would be added to the revenue limit amount, and those dollars would be then used for energy projects within the district. And again, when we added this exemption, um, even with this four point three million dollar exemption, uh, to the revenue limit, we were looking again at a tax, total tax levy that was flat, and now is actually lower because of the, uh, equalized aid that was added by the legislature. One of the buildings that's going to be utilizing quite a bit of this dollars will be the, the Cathedral School. Um, it's a good project because, number one, the building is empty, um, and a lot of work can be done in that building, um, during the school year. Other buildings, we're looking at this building, um, which we have not done any work for quite a long time also. And again, we will look at other buildings as we determine, once the, once the exemption is approved by the board, as to which projects that we will do the energy projects on. That has not been set in stone as to exactly which buildings there are, so we would be bringing that to you also.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, um, Sandy?
Hi.
Warren? Hi. Jeffrey?
Hi.
Ecker?
Aye.
Laka?
Aye.
Carrie Five Zero. Um, and then next, uh, we have our Community Service Fund budget summary. Um, we've had a lot of public input about this, and, um, I think Alan and Melissa are, um, are going to give us some, um, further information about that.
And again, as required by the legislature, um, it was a requi- requirement to have this on the agenda for school districts when they, uh, approve their budget. And as a unified district, we're a little bit different than the, the, um, can't think of the other districts. The common school districts, we have the, uh, the, the annual meetings is when they went through that. Uh, for a unified district, it was required to be put on the agenda on the evening that the district, uh, set the tax levy, or set the, adopted the budget.
To review from the October seventh board meeting, I provided you some statutory background on the Community Service Fund, and I'm once again providing you a brief description of that Community Service Fund. The primary function of the fund is to serve the community. There is statutory language establishing the Community Service Fund, which says, "A school board may establish and maintain community education, training, recreational, cultural, or other athletic programs and services outside of the regular curricular and extracurricular programs for pupils under such terms and conditions as the school board prescribes. Costs associated with such programs and services shall not be included in the school district's shared costs under statute one twenty-one point zero seven sub six." As I discussed with you, there is no case law interpreting the statutory language. The DPI has provided guidance. However, the DPI's guidance says, "This information and the information on our website is designed to provide school districts with general guidance regarding Community Service Fund activities. It is based on the DPI finance team's interpretation of the statutes. We advise districts to seek legal counsel should they question either this information or the interpretation." And to reiterate, as we discussed on October seventh, we have weighed the factors that the DPI has set forth for characteristics of proper expenditures under the Community Service Fund, and we believe that those expenditures are proper and legal under the statutory guidelines.
I'm just going to talk a little bit about the history of the Community Service Fund. The Community Service Fund was first established in nineteen eighty-three by the legislature, um, but in two thousand and one, they made changes to allow, uh, to exempt Fund eighty from the revenue limits, revenue caps. And again, Fund eighty was then allowed to have its own tax levy. The district's first year that we utilized the Fund eighty was two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. So, as it started in two thousand and one with the ability to levy taxes, the district itself did not utilize the Community Service Fund in two thousand and seven and eight. And at that time, um, I did a survey of the districts within the state of Wisconsin to again see what types of items that other districts are, you know, that had already began utilizing the fund, uh, to, you know, to provide ideas as to what, again, what other districts are utilizing the Community Service Fund for. I mean, currently, there are two hundred and eighty districts out of the four hundred and twenty-four that have a Community Service Fund. So roughly sixty-six percent of the districts in the state utilize the Community Service Fund. Um, in the past two years, as part of our fiscal responsibility, we have reduced the Community Service Fund levy, and again, the levy for this year is the same amount as it was for last school year. Um, within the last two or three years, we have removed some of the items from the Community Service Fund. Um, that would include the, the secondary school security positions, the social workers, tru- and officer position, um, and the extended learning coordinator. The reduction of those items was roughly seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, in the proposed budget for this school year, uh, we have also proposed to move out of Fund eighty, the Public Information Department, the Early Childhood Coordinator, the Homeless Liaison, and the Equity Coordinator, again with additional reductions of, of five hundred and ten thousand dollars. And while we believe that a lot of those, that those items that were in the Community Service Fund certainly satisfied the benefit of the community, but as we looked at what items, um, were dealing with students, a little more centered to with students, uh, we removed some of those items to provide additional dollars for the after-school programs. And that was really what our major increase for this school year was to again, um, add additional dollars to the, to the after-school programs so we could, um, service more students.
I think one of the pieces as we move forward, I, I want to talk a little more about the expenditures. There have been a lot of discussions at the board table and, um, outside the board table in terms of what those different expenditures are, and, and you should have, there's an attachment, um, in, in Neptune tonight, but it was also placed on the website as well. I want to talk just briefly about the, the five things that are left. I think it's five?
Yep, that's five.
That's good, I still have five, that's good. Um, and current expenditures in the proposed Community Serv- Current expenditures in the proposed community service fund, starting with the use of district buildings and sites. I think one of the things in my conversations with Al Benke, who is our director of facilities, talked about the fact that we do charge fees. And it's a fee structure, sometimes it's for, it's for profit, sometimes nonprofit. And those fees actually offset the use of the building and sites. But we allow for all community groups to have access to a safe, affordable, and convenient facilities to support what they're doing for students and citizens in our community. And so there, there is this line item accounts for, and you can see $578,386 in the community service fund. And I think the piece when talking with Al is that these buildings and sites, it pays for your custodians and facilities used and so forth, open to all. Typically, fees are assessed, and also the costs associated with the service aren't included in the district's shared cost under the Wisconsin statute. So that's kind of some background on that particular line item. A lot of conversation about the school resource officers, those liaisons who serve between schools and community. And, you know, digging down, and I've looked at that very seriously, these officers really take a really proactive and preventive, preventive kind of approach to school and community. And I, I can think of numerous conversations and situations that I'm aware of where they have interfaced with the community and thwarted some things that would have impacted our community very negatively. They talk to students and educate our youth about the laws and law enforcement. They're very much involved in investigations about child abuse. They do a lot of public speaking. And they also really spend a fair amount of time as a referral agent, working in partnership with Brown County and Green Bay Police and, and, you know, different resources here in the community as well, Brown County Human Services, for example. And I think the piece, you know, when you think about the greater, greater community now as we've gone through technology with the bullying and cyberbullying and all of those pieces, they've done a tremendous around, amount with prevention and intervention on and off the school grounds. And I know that a lot of, a lot of folks know the, the school resource officers in school, but you can find them in the community many times well beyond the school. They, they, they serve, we have 10 school, school resource officers. And if you look at your line item, that accounts for $1,081,000 in the community service fund. And of course, these services are provided to the entire district community as well. This next piece we heard from, and this is the, the elementary after-school programs and the middle school after-school programs, but these are focused on the 21st century community learning centers. And I think John Benberg from Boys and Girls Club and Steve Hardy and Jill both spoke to, from the YMCA, spoke to the importance of after-school programs. And I think tonight I had an opportunity to speak to the Department of Public Instruction, who is here again, they do an audit frequently. Right now, we're serving 850 students and youth in that, in our programs. Of course, they're open to all. I was at an event last week where John Benberg was speaking publicly. I would say there were probably 800 people in the audience, and he spoke about our 21 CCLC programs and community and how they are open to every and each child in our community, as well as just the Green Bay area public school students. And just as an aside, one of the things, as I was thinking about this, and it was reflected back, someone brought it back to my attention, I think it was Stan Kokas, who said, "You remember what the DPI said about the funding?" And so I went back and looked through my notes. When the Department of Public Instruction last February had their site visit, they talked about one of the strengths of our 21 CCLC program and noted, and I quote, "The use of Fund 80 to increase the amount of services available to the program promises to contribute to program sustainability for day, for the day when the grant funds diminish or end." So you can see in that line item, it's 817, or 810,788 in that particular budget item. But having visited those programs, it certainly supports our students in after quality, after-school quality programs. The next item is the middle school after-school programs. And I asked Alan to break it out for me and did a little homework on that area as well. The after-school rep programs really, and I did a little research because I wasn't here when they got moved into Fund 80. The conversation, when you start to look at the research around recreational programs that engage youth and support them academically and socially and emotionally and physically, as well as cognitively, are very important. And this, my understanding, one of the important reasons of broadening it to not just a school program, but a community program, was the fact that there were youth in our community who were not participating, and the importance of participating in at least one activity is what the research will say. And so as I drilled down into it, found that the programs itself, it says, you know, that whole piece, it talks about the fact that a student's education, whether home or private, often students may not be able to support an opportunity by personal costs. And so to be able to have this open for every student in our, in our area. And also, you know, some, if you're homeschooled or in a private school, you may not have enough members to support a team. So there's, there are competitions and so forth. So I went back and looked during the 2012, '13 school year, staff provided me with the fact that 2,202 students or youth participated in this particular program. And the budgeted amount, to break that out, is $412,039. And there is a fee involved, a $10 fee, participation. And then middle school football, you heard from a person tonight, again, a similar kind of situation in that, and I would say a little bit in reverse, when we had a community program here, a community-wide football program, but it was not accessible to all the youth in the community. And that was a conversation I heard when I came to Green Bay. I was visiting Lombardi Middle School. Because of the cost prohibitive, but also transportation. And it was interesting-
Just even finding out about it was hard.
Right, and I, I went, I think it was in my first day visiting schools in the district, before I was even hired, I was at Lombardi. And someone approached me and said, "Can you believe Lombardi Middle School doesn't have a football program? This is Green Bay." But more importantly, I think it goes back to the importance of youth being able to access our community programs. And so the irony of that was that they couldn't. And so that was, I think, that for what I heard at this table, a very important reason to bring that program into, into the community service fund. There are 301 youth who participated in the program this fall. The line item for that, when you break it out, is 193,344 and a $10 participation fee. And then that's the, the middle school after-school programs. And then the last piece is the taping of the board meeting. Of course, the taping of the meetings support the district's, this outward kind of facing communication that we have, primary function of serving in our community. Obviously, the taping, anyone can review it, and this line item is $9,000 in the budget. I think the piece I did want to also mention, Alan, Alan mentioned that we had moved some positions out of Fund 80. One of the things we were trying to do, obviously, and our goal was certainly not to increase the tax levy, to recognize that the overall tax levy had to remain the same. But the piece that we see is we see growing numbers of children who need to have meals at night and need to have those supports after school. We needed to move things over. So when it's referenced that there's increases, for example, significant increases in administration, some of that is actually some of the positions we moved over, that would be part of that. So I wanted to make sure that that was understood. In addition to the mandated pieces that the, the state has put into place for response to intervention, as well as the, the piece around educator effectiveness. There are some mandates right now that we have to attend to, that are unfunded, that we've addressed in this budget, and still been able to maintain an overall tax levy, the same for our, our community, so.
All right, does anyone have any comments or questions?
I think Andrew and I were the only ones on the board at the time when we first entered into Fund 80. You weren't.
No, I was.
The first year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then Brenda, Andrew and I-
It's only what, six, seven years ago?
Yeah. All right. And we didn't enter into it lightly. We, we discussed this a lot in terms of not wanting to burden our taxpayers, burden our community. But these were programs that we thought were valuable, and we chose to do that. And we continue to support programs that we think are valuable. And these are ongoing expenses. These are not one-time expenditures that you can grab out of a, a fund balance and take care of it. These are ongoing programs, and they're critical to the children in our district. And I think it's, and they're legitimate programs, and it's legitimate use of the money. And we don't take it lightly, as is evidenced by the fact that we have trimmed things that were legitimate uses of it, but we've found other funding for it on occasion and shifted it. So I think we need to keep that in mind, that's not something that you can fix with a snatch from the fund balance. Because that's, you can't do that constantly.
Anybody else?
Just to share, as I've watched and listened carefully, I don't think I've heard a single person say that these weren't, these programs weren't of value to our youth and community, and I, I just wanted to share that out.
All right, before I entertain a motion on taking action to approve the budget, I would like to thank again Alan and all of his staff and everybody else involved. We have a lot of hands that go into creating this budget for all their hard work. And I would also like to echo a little bit of what Mike said. I mean, this is not, this is not something that is handed to us in October that we've never seen or talked about. We work on, we make decisions all year long about what we want to fund, what we're not going to fund. We spend a lot of time when we're funding new programs deciding where it is that we can find efficiencies so that we, we aren't just adding programs all of the time. And, and we do take our responsibility as fiscal agents very seriously. And, and it's, it's something that we, when we add, when we add new programs and we add new positions, it's a serious conversation at the board level. It's not something that we just approve without really seriously thinking about whether we need the program or whether we can afford the program, so. And I know that we will begin work at our next board meeting, you know, for the following year, creating the, the budget for next year. But I do think that the budget represents our priorities as a board, our, our goals of reducing the achievement gap and assuring that all of our students have chances to, to learn and succeed in the environment that fits them. And that's been something that we've put great emphasis on in the last few years, is that education customization. So I think this represents our, the board direction that we've, that we've provided to the administration. So with that, unless, Andrew, you want to say something?
Well, I guess, yeah, I was kind of wondering if we were gonna do the motion and then talk. It sounds like it's gone the other way around, which is, it's okay, I just don't want to. You know, I've 13, you know, 13 years on the board. I'm sure the public has thought a lot of things about me, some good and some bad. And my colleagues in the administration have probably thought a lot of things about me, probably a fair majority of it good, probably, I hope. One thing that I'm pretty sure is a label that almost nobody would ever apply to me, though, would be rubber stamp. I'm sure Alan, Gene could attest to that. My final, my final technical questions and spreadsheets and so forth, I was asking questions right up until about, what, 3:30? About 3:30 today, I was still asking questions, and my mind wasn't made up. I needed more, more data. And I'm able to support the, I'm able to support this budget now. And I will say, if we were, if we were in a position that we were cutting programs that impacted kids, I would be critical of the amount of money that's in the, the fund balance. But rainier, rainier days could come. I do think, and I've always thought, that 15% in the fund balance is enough. But we're doing a lot of things for kids with this budget. I'm, you know, this outrageous taxation, which is savings of 20, 30 bucks for the average homeowner. Okay, that's an outlandish increase because it's negative, most people will pay less tax. Finally, you know, you can, people could certainly look at the raw number and mischaracterize what we're doing. And, you know, the 30-second, the 30-second sound bite is always latched on to more than the, than the, even the three-minute conversation, much less discussing for an hour like we have been. But just in case I, I had to make this chart for myself before I could say for sure yes on the budget. And when you look at, when you look at what people are, are taking home after deductions, educators started with us in 2009 pending the outcome of negotiations. But between, between '09 and this current year, because we asked for a higher share of healthcare costs, they actually brought home less pay when you consider their out-of-pocket healthcare, too. For an experienced educator, the difference, the difference is a lot. We're not, we're not giving big raises. The small raises that have been given were more than compensated for by out-of-pocket healthcare costs and increased retirement contributions. So no one's getting a 15% raise, no one's getting a 5% raise. And I take very seriously the adding of administrative positions. I voted no on a bunch of them this year because I thought we had other things we needed to do first. And in the end, with the passing of this budget, I think I'll be able to come around and support those positions when the time is right. I never have voted for a position that I think is unnecessary or useless, and I just want to make sure it's not characterized that I do such things or, or that I rubber stamp. That is probably about the third worst thing someone could call me is a rubber stamp, and I can't say the other two, so I'm going to support the budget.
All right, anyone else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the 2013-14 approved budget is modified to be adopted.
Second.
Any other comments? Right, Sandy?
Lecca?
Hi.
Ecker?
Hi.
Melanie?
Hi.
Jeffrey?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi. Carrie 5-0. And with that, we have an adopted budget. And again, thank you. We also have a closed session, so I will read the motion to send us into closed session. Closed session is scheduled for Monday, October 28, 2013, immediately following adjournment of the public hearing and special board meeting at the District Office Building pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to lit negotiation of collective bargaining agreements. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law.
So moved.
Second.
Sandy?
Ecker?
Hi.
Jeffrey?
Hi.
Melanie?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Lecca?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0, we will adjourn across the hall.
Carrie 5-0, we will adjourn across the hall.